Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 16th, 2019 school committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session regarding continued discussion relative to collective bargaining agreements with employee groups and individual employees and the strategies to be followed and/or continued ongoing litigation. The school committee will reconvene in open session following the executive session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have an emotion and a second. This requires a roll call vote. How do you vote, Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, as I assume Mr. Cutlass does for executive session.
Aye also.
And Mr. Cutlass as well. Thank you. We will reconvene at regular hours at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 16th, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting. The October 16th school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Seeing none, I would like to ask Mr. Wilson to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a couple wonderful students here. In our recognition, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Malone at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, it is a great evening tonight when we can honor such outstanding students. I'd like to have Principal Vogel, please come on up. And we're going to have two students join her, Kyle Morris and Megan Cunningham. If you could both come up, please. And we're so proud because both of these students will receive a letter of commendation. And they're among 34,000 students out of 1.5 million students who took the PSAT in 2018. And they're recognized for their exceptional performance on the PSAT. This is an outstanding reflection of two students who obviously worked very hard on this level of work. But it's also a great reflection on certainly the instruction and importance of the instruction at the high school and through all of our schools here in Tewksbury. So this is a great opportunity for us. But Ms. Vogel, I'll let you speak a little bit more.
Something that happens across the country and a very special honor and recognition very recently left and I'm grateful for them. And I gave them those certificates. But it's actually more committed and more difficult in Massachusetts to be recognized for commended or even commended to the next level of the senior finalists. Because there are so many high-performance students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that the bar that they set nationwide, that so many students in Massachusetts hit that minimum bar, that it's much more difficult to receive the recognition. So really, I think it would be more special being done here in Massachusetts than anywhere else in the nation.
That's awesome. Oh, yeah. Recognitions we have to read for both of them. Let me see. Let's go ahead.
So this is for Megan first, Megan Cunningham. Resolution of recognition that whereas Megan Cunningham, a senior at Tewksbury Memorial High School, has been named commended student in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. And whereas Megan received a letter of commendation for her exceptional performance from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. And whereas Megan is placed in the top 3% of more than 1.5 million students who took the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in the fall of 2018. And whereas Megan has brought the pride, recognition, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, and to the Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Megan Cunningham. Thank you.
We have one more. So it's a resolution of recognition. Whereas Kyle Morris, senior
at Tewksbury Memorial High School, has been a commended student in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. And whereas Kyle has received a letter of commendation for his exceptional performance from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. And whereas Kyle is placed in the top 3% of more than 1.5 million students who took the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in the fall of 2018. And whereas Kyle has brought the pride, recognition, and honor to himself, to his parents and family, and to the Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, recognizes the exceptional performance of Kyle.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Megan. Great job.
Congratulations.
If the students' parents want to come up, we're going to take a picture in here. Congratulations right over here with your principal. Congratulations.
So if Megan and Kyle's parents want to come up, you can get in the picture. That is my fog right there as our camera. And they're going to get you all, I know. Very proud.
Stand with them, and then we'll get in there with you. All right. Squish it. We're ready. Jason, you got one? Okay, then we'll get in.
Bring the school committee in.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we were eyes open.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if the committee would entertain the opportunity to move from new business, the Tewksbury Memorial High School international trip request to the front of this presentation?
Sure. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have an emotion and a second to move the international trips from new business up to current. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote. Go right ahead, Mr. Malone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, what you have in front of you is our Tewksbury Memorial High School recommended international school trips for school year 2021. As you know, these international trips for students have become very popular. As a result, Principal Vogel formed a student travel committee amongst teachers in her schools to review the departmental trip proposals. You have in front of you three proposals for international trips, as I said, in school year 2021. And the math department is proposing the Greece trip in February during February vacation of 2021. The science department, another trip to Costa Rica in April vacation 2021. And then fine art, fine and performing arts are proposing a British Isles trips, trip in the summer of 2021. These international trips are a very rewarding learning opportunity surrounding history, culture, ecologies, and an opportunity for our students to practice newly acquired languages. EF Tours is a very well-respected travel organization who Tewksbury Memorial High School has used several times. They're very well organized, well-planned, safe. Their reputation precedes them. We've been very happy working with them to move forward. These trips require a vote of the committee. Both Principal Vogel and the student travel committee coordinator, Ms. Bailey Mahoney, are with us tonight if you should have any questions.
Fantastic. Does any of my colleagues have any questions? Mrs. Vogel or her colleague?
I just have one. I noticed when I was looking through the packet this week that it's all priced with the idea that this would be 20 students. And looking at the itineraries on all three trips, I think that we really kind of hopefully would see even an increased number of that. So with the students, would it be on the school committee, onto the school district to get in touch with the students to let them know if it's going to be less than this anticipated amount? Or is that through EF Tours?
It's a good vote. If the trips are approved, we will send parent right when we give out all the information including pricing to the parents. And if you start planning early enough, there is usually a discount. For example, the Italy trip is in February. We started planning in 2018, and this year we signed up by a certain date to be doing our price.
Yeah.
The more students we have, the more flexibility we have with the schedule. So we also get a little more play with the pricing.
Yeah. My oldest is going to the Italy trip this upcoming February and is very excited for it. And I just look forward to lots of the students in Tewksbury getting to take this opportunity because I can already hear my youngest saying, "Oh, Greece is for me next time." "I'm elected to go to Italy. I get to go to Greece." And I just have to say that I actually was, I went on with the EF Tours to New York City back when it was at the Ryan School. And I can't say enough about this travel company. The security and the protocols and procedures that are in place are next in, I mean, it's just incredible. I can't say enough. And I'm proud to endorse this. And I thank you for taking the time to give the kids in Tewksbury this opportunity. We can do a lot in the classrooms, but these hands-on and real-life experiences really make well-rounded children that, you know, will benefit greatly from this. So thank you for the time and effort getting all this together and you're willing to take our kids abroad.
Anyone else? I would just like to add that I also think these are tremendous opportunities for our students. It's fantastic to have a bilingual, I think, tour guide 24/7 with you guys. I think it's also fantastic that these trips are taking place during school vacations and in the summertime. So it's just pretty easy for me to support. And as I said, it's a very good opportunity for those students to go and do additional learning. So without any other questions, I entertain a motion to approve the trips.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have an emotion and a second. All those in favor of approving the three 2021 trips? The first in February vacation to Greece, the second, April vacation to Costa Rica, and the third, the summer of 2021 to the British Isles, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'm sorry. It's just been brought to my attention that this requires a roll call vote. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you for that.
Hey, just making sure.
Help, Mr. Stadman. And good luck on the trips. Thank you for coming in. Moving back on the agenda, we have Mr. Jack Stadman for our student representative report. Good evening.
Hi. We had a lot of clubs doing a lot of great things. We've got the Red Men football team, which is currently on a winning streak against Boston College, beating 18 to 14 North Andover, 37 to 20, as well as Barica Memorial High School, 32 to 14. The Tewksbury cheerleading team, marching band, flag team have all put on successful halftime shows at the recent home games. The yearbook committee suggests that all seniors get their yearbooks in, yearbook orders in as soon as possible to avoid late fees. The science club is still looking for new members. The academic decathlon recently went through their challenges that they would like to accomplish over this upcoming year. Student council representatives are going to be helping out during the elementary school Halloween parties that are coming up this Friday as well as next Friday. Decca representatives started planning their annual fashion show supporting the Megan McCarthy Research Fund. The drama club has continued rehearsals for their upcoming performance of Alice in Wonderland. And the drama crew is excited to be back. The high school will also be hosting a homecoming dance for all high school students. Make sure to fill out your permission form before buying tickets. And in the spirit of fall, Tewksbury will be hosting the annual Apple Fest Craft Fair at the high school on October 26th. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Jack, when is that homecoming dance?
Friday.
Oh, very nice.
Thought he was going to say later. Thank you, Mr. Stadman.
Of course.
Moving on to presentations, I'm going to ask Mr. Malone to introduce our wonderful architects and building engineers we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, our elementary school building committee process is moving at a lightning pace. And Mr. Collins from Erie is here this evening, and his team is ever-growing bigger and bigger. We've had Flansburgh here before, but now we have our friends from Consigli as well. So, Mr. Collins, if you'd like to introduce maybe everybody and then give us a little presentation and update on the elementary school building committee.
Certainly. Thank you very much. We can come forward and like that.
That's fine.
And I would recommend you face either one of those two cameras, as otherwise they're going to get the back of your head throughout the entire presentation. There you go.
I'll take a minute and give some introductions. My name is Peter Collins, working as the owner's project manager for CBI Erie, I mean, Tewksbury Elementary School project. With me tonight is certain flansburgh architects, Bill Beatrice, the landscaping consultant, Sam.
Crosby, Sessinger, Smorish.
Okay, thank you. And then the new members of the project team, the construction managers, Consigli Construction, Milford, Chris Lyons, the staff manager, our construction managers, Christian Wood, project executives. So the project team is now essentially a vision formed. All members on the team, OPM, designer, construction manager, certificate of building committee. So we're going to do kind of a brief presentation to update the committee on where the project stands today since we last met.
It has nothing to do with this.
Actually, you're up first, so here's the speaker, the pointer.
Okay. So you can see that screen. That's kind of a quick overview of the project schedule. This is very immediate. I did it kind of as a little one screenshot. The construction manager is going to certainly provide a more detailed construction schedule once we get underway. This is kind of an overview of the milestone dates. So I just start off with rows 1 through 7. It's essentially the feasibility schematic design phase, which really started back in 2016 when the district submitted their statement of interest to the NSDA. And they were accepted back in February of 2017. Thereafter, the building committee started to form the project team. They selected an OPM and designer. Pretty much the calendar year 2017, we got the project underway. Our design team and the OPM and the building committee put together the schematic design, submitted it to the NSDA. The NSDA accepted the project. The project went into a town meeting, which was a voted yes in this past May. At that point in time, this prior to it started to give it to the procurement of the construction manager. And Consigli Construction was selected as a construction manager to work for the project. That pretty much wrapped up what we call one of the multiple phases of the project, which is the feasibility schematic design. Once the project was approved at the local level, it went into design. And the first level of design was design development. We started that as shown here in June. And we just pretty much concluded the submission to the NSDA back in September. We are now on the status of review comments of the design submission. But concurrently, the design team has moved into the next level of design called 60% contract documents. With that said, let me back up a little bit. During the design development with the construction manager involved, the construction manager and the designers put together two cost estimates, which went through kind of a process of estimating the costs of the design and design development, the design team and construction manager. We reconciled the two designs, our cost estimates, and we put forth that submission to the NSDA. The project team is going to continue to do two more cost estimates at the 60% contract document phase and the 90% contract document phase. So throughout the process, there'll be a continuation of the design continuing through the process, construction manager involved with cost estimates, constructibility reviews, providing strong contractor input to what will work for the project, project scheduling, and site logistics. This is a project that will be built on an active school campus at the Ryan School. So we're going to certainly dig into the depth of resources and knowledge the construction manager will provide to the project. And now Christian and Chris, we'll certainly speak on that a bit later this evening. Long story short, as we're getting into the design phase now, we continue to design through next spring. We will probably establish a protocol guarantee maximum price of the GMP for the construction manager will provide a price based on the design that is guaranteed maximum price as they see it at that point in time. Then we'll execute into construction phase as well. And we'll discuss coordinating all these activities certainly through the building committee, through the school department superintendent's office, and most certainly through the Ryan School community as well. Certainly Judy McGinnis, the principal over there, so she's well aware of what the activities will involve. Speaking of that, the schedule next week, this project team, all of us to leave with the principal, Judy McGinnis, on the Ryan campus about the kickoff meeting about site logistics and phase in the project. So she'll be deeply engaged in that process as well. There may be an opportunity, I think we're going to have an opportunity first of the year for Christian and Bill to maybe do an early package for some of the work, some of the site work. As you may know, we're rebuilding the building on a new set football field. So we're looking at you for the first of the new year, is maybe do some early site packages, get the field work underway early with the goal of having it ready for the start of the football season starting September 1, 2020. So we want to start early, we need to get the packages together, the design team, landscapers, the construction manager, getting those big packages out late this calendar year, early 2020, get the construction underway. So we can get the field activities prepared and installed for the balance of 2020 for the start of the football season in 2020. And then might do some early packages as well with respect to building foundations and structural steel. Later in the winter months, the March, February, March, you know, that kind of thing. Those exact dates are not fully determined, but we're working on that now with the construction manager, their resources, and the fact that other designers is moving along. And then probably May or June, we begin to full, full project construction and final balance of the bid process that takes place around the school gets out in June. We'll then take over the campus for the summer. Again, all this will be discussed in the side of our time with the project team, the building committee, the school department, and taking access of the school campus for the summer, so that we can really get into the building and the field work, getting it ready for the school service and the kind of things. That'll continue for two years while schools actively engage at the Ryan. And then working together collaboratively in prohibiting the campus while building the building and dating school operations as well. The goal certainly is shown here on row 45. That was very vague. We're certainly looking to have the school, the new school building ready for school operations in September 2022. So be ready for this calendar year, academic calendar year 2022, 2023. So it'll be about a two-year, 24-month construction window starting in 2020 through 2022. This is, again, this is a quick overview, it's very milestone level. We'll be working to help you follow. Certainly, as I said earlier, the whole project team is now formed. We're going to continue to do what we do in coordinating the town, the district, school operations as well. We have a long schedule to discuss. Turn it over to Bill now.
So what I thought I'd do is I brought Sam here. Sam's our landscape architect. And I thought it'd be a great idea for him to go over the site. And with that, I'll let you take it away.
Good evening. So in the northeast corner of the site will be the new school. As Peter mentioned, where the stadium field is and the practice fields. The new football and soccer field, synthetic turf field, will be in northwest corner with seating for approximately 1,500 and lighting for evening games and activities, as well as the new associated fieldhouse and small entry plaza there. And the Ryan School will sort of be the central piece of this campus. And creates, the two buildings and the field create this quadrangle sort of in the middle with a number of shared spaces between the schools. Both schools will have parent drop-off in this location. Both schools will have bus drop-off in this location with capacity for 16 buses. All traffic will enter the school off of Pleasant Street at this south entrance. And there will be a slightly adjusted curb cut there. At that point, buses can proceed off to the right to go into the loop, as well as some cars for this parking area. If you're continuing along, you pass through a slightly reconfigured Ryan School parking lot. We're leaving most of it as is, but certainly doing restriping and adding some parking spots as well. Moving along, you begin to pass that fieldhouse in the plaza area. You can make a left into this events or overflow parking lot. And then there will be a natural brass open field here for potentially practice events. As you continue along the loop, you'll hit another parking lot, which will have central office parking spots dedicated in it, as well as event parking for the fields. The new loading dock for the new school. And then this parking lot, which will have the EV charging stations. There is also emergency access off Monroe, which is gated. And then you continue along again to the parent drop-off loop, another parking area likely for staff and visitors. And then everyone exits at this northern existing curb cut onto Pleasant Street. A few things to note, in this sort of quadrangle area, there will be a small gathering or outdoor classroom space, which will be planted all around. And it may have a special pavement with either a nice score pattern or some color concrete or something along those lines. Nice seating area for those kids waiting to be picked up here. And then finally, there's a fairly sizable play area at the end of this quad with good sightlines to the parking and drop-off loop, which will be designed for maximum capacity. So we can get as many kids as we can on there and have challenging age-appropriate equipment in that location. And I think that's better for me.
I think one of the things that we worked really hard with the, with the community at large and the school department was addressing, you know, the parent and student drop-off and getting cars off Pleasant Street. And that's why we're, as Sam noted, where everybody has to loop around the entire site. And that gives us a long queue to pull those cars off Pleasant Street and help alleviate some of the congestion there. We met with the school department several times to locate parking areas appropriately, get the counts right. So right now, I'd say we're at a really good point with the site design. I think we've addressed most of the issues. And I think to that, I'll go into some of the interior of the building and just give you a brief overview of the overall floor plan and some interior spaces that we were designing. So the building itself is three stories. So on the first floor, in this corner is the administration office. And so we'll have great visibility to the parent drop-off that happens here and to the bus drop-off that happens over in this corner here. This area over here is district offices. So all the offices that are in the old central office building on-site get relocated to this area here. The first floor has the cafeteria, a music area, the outdoor classroom that serves as, you know, overflow space for the cafeteria possibly, outdoor instructional space. And you can access this outdoor classroom from the cafeteria or from the art room or from this project room. So all these spaces have access to this outdoor space if need be. And then these two wings here are classrooms and classrooms. We have team rooms in between the classroom wings to kind of serve as a hub and a gathering spot for multiple grades or multiple classes. And we have And we have, in, shown here in orange are the sped spaces, and they are evenly distributed amongst the floors and the wings. Moving up to the second floor, gymnasium and the media center, again, classroom wings that are kind of separate and isolated from these main spots. And also, I should note, the cafeteria below, so the cafeteria is actually a two-story space, and I got some renderings coming up in the show, you'll see that. Art room again, a lab here, STEM lab. And then the third floor pretty much follows suit with classroom wings, classroom wings, central team room, sped spaces distributed for each wing. Looking at some of the interior spaces, we're starting to develop, what I have here is a couple of precedent images for cafeteria. So we're envisioning these cafeterias as they, it will have a platform space, so it is a performance space, it serves as a cafeteria, a meeting space. It's a two-story space, very open, lot of natural light, exposed structure in the ceilings. Now, these are some precedent images, and then this is kind of one of our latest rendering of that space. Two-story space, there's an overlook here, we have some wood paneling that we're going to introduce to warm the space up a bit, and this is a sweeping glass, a sweeping curve of two-story glass behind this curtain right here. So we're looking for a very active space, a lot of natural light. Gymnasium, some precedent images, kind of a typical gymnasium, hardwood floors, open web joists, exposed structure, wall pads around the perimeter, you know, gym wall pads, safety pads, gym divider current, so it can be divided in half, pull-out bleachers. And again, rendering of the space that we're proposing, bleachers, wall pads around the perimeter, acoustic pads above that, curtain comes down to divide the space. And then some precedent images for the media center. So what we're seeing a lot in our designs, this not, these days, is a lot of flexibility in the media spaces. There's zone for multi-uses, we see a lot of flexible or movable book stacks that can be arranged, and you're seeing some images here of some of our schools that we've done in the past. And so for Tewksbury, thinking along the same lines, a lot of glass for natural light, low, given the age of the children, book stacks that are low and movable, soft seating, spread out through, in different zones in the space, just to allow maximum flexibility. And that's a quick overview of the plan, the spaces inside. In terms of the exterior, we're in the process of developing that and reviewing those designs with the school department. But our palette will be tip, will be very complimentary to the Ryan School that's there, so we'll be taking some of that iron spot, brick that's in Ryan School, we'll be using that, and other materials that are on-site already to kind of create a uniform campus-like environment. And that's pretty much the building in a nutshell. Is there any questions?
So that's, I know, that's kind of a brief overview of where we've been, the layout of all of that to land. The project, as the superintendent said in the introductions, it is moving at a rather rapid speed, moving along swiftly. The project team, as I said, is fully formed, the building committee, very active, the school department is very participatory, very generous in meeting with us, giving us sound decisions on the project design, particularly designing during the two weeks with the design team and construction manager, the OPM. So it is moving quickly, and it is coming together fast, but it's going to be a wonderful project, and we're looking forward to getting underway and starting construction activities to put this building together.
And I would just add that, you know, all through the process, we've been meeting not only with the school department, of course, but the town departments. So we've been seeking the input, so we've met with the police and fire department to talk about security issues. We are forming a facilities group to start going over the campus systems of the space. So it's been a very intensive process.
The town manager has been very active with the butters around the property, the community, so we meet about an hour before we meet on the building committee with the butters, scheduled meeting with them, get their input, make sure that we make a smooth process. We expect to that. As Bill mentioned, we are now in the permitting phase, so we are meeting with county agencies. So we had conservation last week, we meet with them, get next week, clean board for next week, and things like that, the town engineers, the police and fire, so the whole community as a whole, county agencies, residents as well, building committee, school department, everybody has a chance to voice their opinion, participate in the process.
Schedule looks good so far, we're on pace.
Welcome by any of this point, and welcome to what the construction managers keeping us on our toes. They haven't built a project, and you know, they have a deliverable to do, so the OPM or the designer will certainly slack a little bit, they look us in the eye, keep us on our toes, keep us going, because they have a deliverable to do. We're very active in the project as well, both from cost estimating perspective, scheduling perspective, site logistics and phasing, which is what they're going to be specializing as well. As I mentioned, we're going to meet next week with Judy McGinnis, the principal at the Ryan School, because when construction activities do get underway, there will be a lot of activities, particularly from the construction side of things, and the construction manager's team wants to be very cognizant of the demands and the needs of the school to be operating quietly, safely, and conserve that educational environment. So they're going to be involved with that. You want to get a break in the first half? Do you have anything from the management's side to put that down?
And I just wanted to ask, Mr. Collins, you said by September of next year, that multipurpose field will be ready for the turf field?
That's the goal.
Yeah, that's the reason why I'm looking for the early release package in January, have it ready for the football season.
Okay, perfect.
So the field itself.
Should be good.
Just a more in-depth question. Football's a big thing here. The field, the field and the stands, the field and the fieldhouse, I mean, what do you, are you just shooting just for the field?
The field will be, the thing is, is where this is public bid.
Yep.
We, the drawings aren't, they don't fine enough to have all the lighting, all the concession stands in place.
Okay.
We do have the ability to bid out the field proper, so you can play, but the goal would be to get that as far along as possible.
Great.
Absolutely have that field ready for the football season.
Awesome, thank you.
And with that, we've all met as well with the athletic committee as well on the project. The school board has selected and appointed individuals to lead the athletic committee, and they're part of the project process as well. They've engaged also with the design team, construction manager, the building committee. And I think that's been shared with them, with athletic committee, about the use of taking the field, taking the field out of use and putting it back in, for example. And then, if I could add, I believe, don't get me wrong, I believe we all agree with the athletic committee that the current fieldhouse, the Brooks Fieldhouse, will be made out of service on January 1st.
Yes.
Which is good, and that's, again, participatory, everybody's engaged, welcoming the process, so it gives a leg up for the construction manager and the construction team to get the line of order, get ramped up. So everybody's negotiating, giving, giving a kick on the process, which is good.
Great. Any other comments?
Great. Peter, as always, thank you for coming in here, it's great to get an update, even more so for us, it's fantastic that you're taking all those considerations. We have a lot of students here at the Ryan, and obviously, it's not just the safety, it's not just the distraction of the construction, all that's really important to us as we're trying to increase achievement here in the district. So I know we're, I'm thrilled, I know I can, in this case, speak for everyone, when I say we are tickled pink that you guys are going to make sure you're doing everything that you can to make sure there's least amount of distractions, more so than disruptions, and as we try to keep pushing our learners here in the district, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome. The communication chain is very open between the school department, superintendent's office, the building committee, and all this group here, so, and this school committee as a whole as well, so we're always open to new ideas and new thoughts, if something can be improved, we welcome those thoughts.
Great, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens forum, is there anyone in attendance tonight wishing to speak on any item on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move along to the approval of minutes, Mrs. Demos.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from, sorry, I was still on my elementary school building, from September 18th, 2019.
I'll second.
Have an emotion in a second. All those in favor of approving the September 18th, 2019 regular meeting minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well, unanimous vote. Also, go to Mrs. Demos for the submission of payments and bills, please.
Thank you. I move the school department payroll for the period ending September 19th, 2019, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, in a total amount of $1,331,159.62.
Second.
Have an emotion in a second. All those in favor of approving the payroll period ending September 19th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well, unanimous vote.
Mr. Chair, I moved the school department payroll for the period ending October 3rd, 2019, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,359,789.53.
Second.
Have an emotion in a second. All those in favor of approving the payroll period ending October 3rd, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well, thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. We're going to move along to the superintendent and staff reports, Mr. Malone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just to update the committee, I was able to attend the school safety summit on October 3rd out in Marlboro, was joined by our two school resource officers and assistant principal at the Ryan School, Mr. Hart. The title of this was Fighting Hate in Homegrown Violent Extremism. It was conducted by the Federal Bureau of Investigation, and it certainly gave us a glimpse into some of the online challenges that some of our students face and the availability of negative information out there for our students. So it was a great learning opportunity for us and something we'll absolutely keep an eye on. A big thank you to District Attorney Marion Ryan and her staff for conducting the Dangers in Vaping presentation last night at the Ryan School. For parents, obviously, vaping has become increasingly in the news, the amount of deaths. It's certainly a health concern for many of our students, and we want to make sure all of our parents and students are well-informed on that. But thank you to the district attorney. I do continue to work with our local legislators, both state representatives and state senators in regards to the Student Opportunity Act, which is the education reform bill that is currently at the State House. We're hoping to see that pass through. The impact for Tewksbury could be significant as long as the element attacks this, which is having the ability of special education transportation be applied to circuit break or reimbursement. That would be a big piece for our district if that continues going forward. Also, a big thank you to our town manager, Mr. Montori, to our selectmen, to our finance committee, most of all, right here, our school committee and those citizens who attended the October 1st town meeting, where we had Article 5 approved, which is providing $300,000 to the school to do a study on the doing in the Heathbrook Schools and their long-term viability. This is going to be our huge step in this district that coincides with the building of this new elementary school, is long-term, how can we best support the remaining students in this district who are attending older facilities? What the study would hopefully render to us is a true cost analysis and viability of what level of improvements we'd need to go into these buildings, whether it might be understanding the opportunity of air conditioning, new windows, new roofing, other ventilation opportunities. These are all high-impact items. We still have greenhouse classrooms at the Heathbrook School. We'd like to see what the available designs are to remedy some of those situations so that when it comes time to have a real conversation town-wide about what to do with those buildings, we're dealing with actual numbers and actual cost effectiveness to make the best decision possible for all of us moving forward. But a big thank you to the citizens of Tewksbury for voting that opportunity in. Wednesday, October 2nd was Milk with a Cop Day, which is a great opportunity for the Tewksbury Police Department to partner with Tewksbury Public Schools, gives great exposure for our students to work directly with police officers on the street. It's a great annual event and a great partnership with us and the police department. Quick update on Alphabet. All waitlists have been finalized, and there are no longer any students on any waitlist to enter Alphabet before or after school programming. We also had our first successful non-school day programming. Last Friday was a professional development day for staff, a no-school day for students, and Alphabet provided programming for those families who needed childcare during that time. And that, we'll look forward to continuing on that as we move forward with additional professional development day and analyzing the viability of vacation weeks to support The Tewksbury welcome reception for new residents will take place on October 28th at the Tewksbury Public Library. We will have a table there from Tewksbury Public Schools. It's a great event, we had a lot of newcomers coming into town, particularly with the new school building project, those individuals looking for pre-K opportunities, kindergarten opportunities, with a full-day free kindergarten, this is a great opportunity to have face time with new residents coming in, and we'll have representation there as well. There will also be a CPAC, Basic Rights, presentation tomorrow evening here at Tewksbury Memorial High School, starting at 6:30 PM. And finally, Ms. Demos and myself will be attending the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference in early November, where it's great to get updated on current school committee policies, current connections between the superintendent's association and the school committees, so we hope to report back some outstanding information. Also, just a reminder on some upcoming dates, November 5th is a no-school day, it's Professional Development Day, November 11th is an observance of Veterans Day in memorance of all of our veterans, and November 14th through the 16th, the Tewksbury Memorial High School Theater production of Alice in Wonderland will take place. With that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Regan.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. First of my updates includes an in-state field trip, it's an enrichment field trip, on Saturday, November 17th, to the Boston Opera House, and it's to see the play Come From Away. Again, this is a Saturday enrichment field trip, students from the Ryan, the Wynn and the High School are invited, three teacher chaperones are volunteering their time to participate in this field trip. They have space for 27 either students or students and family members. If parents do participate and sign on with their Ryan, Wynn or High School student, they will need to be quarried to attend. The price per ticket at this point is ranging between $40, $45, including transportation, so it's quite a good deal. Students will receive specific information, then go home through the Ryan, Wynn and High School students. Anybody who does choose to participate would sign up through Community Pass. Today, as you heard, October 16th, was the annual PSAT day for all juniors and sophomores here at the high school. We had 100, we had 27 students absent, but of all of our juniors and sophomores, we had 193 juniors participate in the PSAT and 212 sophomores, for a total of 405 students participating. Students were served lunch after testing concluded and left the Tewksbury Memorial High School at approximately 12:15, giving our teachers their lunchtime and their final block for their prep for the day. So you may be wondering, what do we do with our seniors and freshmen while the school is pretty much in testing mode everywhere? First, let me tell you, our seniors sign up through their guidance counselor as to a college or career needed activity they need to complete. For example, they may be completing their Common App, their resume writing, or going off-campus to meet with college admissions personnel or college and university vis- with college admissions personnel, or college and university visits. Our freshmen participated in now what we're very proud to call our annual Greater Lowell Indian Council Association Day of Learning. If you remember, some of you were at the meeting we had several years back, where the name, the Tewksbury Red Men, was in question. Through that process, we met with the Greater Lowell Indian Council several times, and the council said that they were very proud that Tewksbury wanted to maintain that Native American history within our schools. However, they would really appreciate it if we included education about the Native Americans that inhabited this area as part of our annual practice, and that's what we do. So now, on that PSAT Day, our freshmen participate in several different activities. Starts with opening ceremonies with the tribal councils leaders, then they rotate through four different activities revolving around Native American spirituality, Native American societal life, Native American perceptions and realities as they really were, and then a Native American craft. And this year, the students developed a beaded Native American tribal neckwear. So, and then they close, have their closing ceremonies again with the Indian Council leaders. It's a real, a true great day for all, and we appreciate our ongoing relationship with the Greater Lowell Indian Cultural Association as they truly help our kiddos understand what the history and spirit is behind Red Men pride. In your consent agenda, you'll see our annual attendance letter from District Attorney Marion Ryan. This is a motivational letter, I would say, a joint letter that is written in collaboration with superintendents throughout the Middlesex County, and then one for each of our principals to sign as well. So it's truly a partnership to not only prioritize school attendance, but to also, if you look at the backside, outline the law around school attendance and supports families may receive when truancy and/or attendance are in question. And then finally, in my updates, on October 7th, we had the first of our annual townwide PAC meetings. We reviewed school fundraising policies and procedures, and we also took all of the PAC leaders on a tour of our school resource officer at the Wynn, Mr. James Risers' new technology and video equipment upgrades. I guess you could call it the school resource officers' command central. I mean, improvements to the just definition of the video and the quality, and how this equipment is really helping to make the Wynn a safer place. The PAC appreciated our efforts in school safety, and we certainly appreciate the support through the school committee, Mr. Chairman, and the town in helping us with that endeavor. And that concludes my updates.
Good evening. The last item in your packet here today is just a brief sort of timeline of our budget process for FY '21. We're just finalizing reporting on FY '19. We're right here in FY '20, at the beginning of the FY '20 school year, and we need to start budgeting for our FY '21 budget needs for the district. So that process will start right away. We'll be, in our business office, we'll be projecting salary increases, given that we have our, all of our bargaining unit contracts in place for next year. We'll be able to estimate those. That gives us a good head start on our budget, and 70% of our budget is salary-driven anyway. But then during November, we'll be meeting with department heads and principals to come up with ideas, changes they'd like to see in their programs, personnel, any departments that they run for FY '21. That's a two-way communication. Anything programmatic or personnel-related gets run by a whole bevy of folks to see if we are all in agreement that that's the direction we want to go for FY '21. And in mid-December, we usually have an idea from the town manager, what our target is going to be for FY '21. They have a good feel for where revenues are going to be, expected state aid. At that point, we can start looking at where we're going to be headed for FY '21. January 10th is a big date that we are mandated to provide the town with a preliminary budget. Basically, it boils down to three numbers, a salary, an operating, and a capital outlay number that we're requesting for the upcoming year, usually supported with some account-level detail data for the town manager to review. And then, when we get into January, February, March, we're holding budget workshops where we're presenting our ideas to the public, getting feedback, and that whole, during that whole process, we're coming, new information's becoming available to us. Things are changing. We're making tweaks where we can to come up with our final budget project, product that gets approved in May at next May's town meeting. So, just a brief overview of our budget process and how that's going to flow this year. We're starting already.
I'd just like to add, Mr. Libby, we have some new colleagues here that think it's their first time through the school budget. So Dave's always been very good with myself and Jamie and the rest of the school committee. If you have any specific questions, anyone on the committee, Dave's always the first one to make himself available. So just wanted to extend that as well. Thank you, Mr. Libby. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions regarding tonight's consent agenda?
Quick note, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just in that, there is a document that is a donation by MathWorks, was awarded to Tewksbury Memorial High School Robotics Team. $2,500 community grant. Mr. Morris, who's presented in front of us, and the robotics team who has been here, frightened us a little bit, but they were fantastic. This money is going to be used to offset the portion of the team's registration fee for their upcoming competition. Great work by that Titans team. Not only do they do great things with kids, but they're also getting community support, going out there and securing their own funding. So just an excellent, excellent job by the robotics team.
Great, fantastic. And I just have one comment regarding the truancy letter. Obviously, I think we all share on that responsibility, especially as parents. I have two young children, so I'd just like to reiterate how important it is to make sure that you do get your children here to school every day on time, and it's certainly going to help them do better in the classroom, so.
Make sure they get on the bus.
Without any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Cutlass, you've got a big shoes to fill after the presentation. Good luck.
Well, I was just going to summarize. Mr. Cutlass did a great job with Mr. Beatrice in making the presentation. Everything's on schedule so far, and everything looks good. And the meeting with all the planning board next week, conservation again next week, to get the permitting process underway. And we're continuing to meet on a regular basis. They're working diligently with our school administration and the staff, and everything looks good so far, so happy to say.
Great, fantastic. Anything to add, Mrs. Demos?
No, I think he has said it all.
Great, thank you. I'll stay with you, Mrs. Demos, for the Tewksbury Education Foundation.
We have yet to establish our first meeting of the year. I'll report once we meet.
Excellent. I will update in the CPAC. As the superintendent said earlier, tomorrow right here at the high school at 6:30, there is a Basic Rights Workshop for anyone interested, I believe, at 6:30 to 9 o'clock. You don't have to be there right at the start. If you want to pop in and get some information, that's a good time to do that. And also, they will be, the CPAC will be holding a social event on November 21st down at the Blue Wave. That's on 20 Carter Street down in Tewksbury, by the hockey rink. So that's going to be a good event to go down there and see. That's a fantastic facility. If you haven't been down there, to go check it out. And some good work going on down there. So that's all I have for the CPAC. I'm now going to turn to Mr. Statman for a wellness advisory update.
No, I'd reported out last month, but just one of our notes, October 27th, we've got the community Safe Halloween. It's going to be hosted here at TMHS by the Tewksbury Police Department. 10 to 1, music games, treats, candy, all that good stuff. So come on by, bring the kids. It should be a good time.
Great.
And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Statman. It's my understanding we have a policy meeting scheduled for October 24th, so hopefully we'll have an update after that meeting. Takes us to all business, the enrollment. I'd ask Mr. Malone to give us a quick update.
Just a quick update, Mr. Chairman. We have submitted our October 1 numbers. That's a key number going into DESE. Typically, grants and other data for the entire year is used from the October 1 date. We're about 50 students down from maybe where we were last year in that October 1. It tends to climb back up during the year. Some of those things that we can really see the benefits of a new elementary school helping out with is some of our BLIP years, where we have higher numbers at certain grade levels, and then we look at the distribution in our K-2 and 3-4 schools, because they are divided up, can look as some uneven class sizes. Obviously, the new elementary school building project will have a significant impact on that. But it's also something we keep an eye on. When some of those larger grade-level numbers pop through our elementary schools, we have to adjust some of our resources, sometimes add a classroom at a school, sometimes we have to add a classroom that falls that large number as it goes through the elementary. Those all do resolve themselves once we get to a district-wide level of grade span. But those are the pieces that we tend to really keep our eye on as this goes on. But we'll check in on our new enrollments, month to month, to see what the impact overall is on the change in the total numbers. But it's not a significant change, and all the studies have told us that we will stay stable long-term with possibly a slight decline.
And if I can add to that enrollment update, as requested, we've included the class sizes at the Tewksbury Memorial High School. Let me just go through this a little bit. The first page you see, page one, gives you the class sizes by department, and you have the number of classes, the median class size, and then the average class size. Maybe perhaps a couple of these numbers jump out at you, which I can explain a little further. You can see some of our special populations have lower, small-group class sizes. And then perhaps you wondered, geez, why is the health and PE number at 42? Can there really be a class of 42 students? So if you peruse through the pages and jump to page five, you'll see what may even look more alarming, and that is an average PE class size of 62. So let me just explain that a little bit. Last year, the PE Health and Wellness Department began to have students select PE activities within larger groups. So for example, and students love this option, so if there are two teachers teaching, there'd be two activities up to 30 students per. So 60 students for two teachers, 94.3. So because they list that as one course, right, to choose two activities multiple times, that's why that class average looks so off. But again, you'll notice the core content and the required classes have the higher class averages, where the smaller groups or onesies, you know, may have some skewed numbers. I should have, just for those of you who are looking at this maybe for the first time, just helped you out a little bit with the class codes. We have standards-based, grade-level standards-based college preparation classes. Those are for all. That's what the CP is. H designates an honors level, and AP and DE designate those college opportunities, pre-college, where they're advanced placement in dual enrollment. So when you're looking at the codes, you'll see the same course listed under different levels. Hope that update helps.
Great. I'd like to thank you for including that, Mrs. Regan. I know Mrs. Demos had a question regarding that last month, so it's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. And I believe you're also going to roll into our new MCAD accountability again.
So here we are again, another year of NG MCAS with a slightly different twist. So I'm going to do what I did last year and really summarize the accountability process overall, and then show you where Tewksbury lands. So 2019, last spring, when our students participated in the Next Generation MCAS, 71% of all total Massachusetts schools were shown to be improving or better. All of the Tewksbury Public Schools landed in that category. Just going to go down a couple of bullets. The overall accountability classification for MCAS schools, there was 1,846 MCAS schools, 76% were designated not requiring assistance or interventions. That was all of our schools. 12% were designated as requiring assistance, and 12% designated as insufficient data. That would be the Heathbrook in doing. They don't have MCAS testing at those schools, so there's no data for them. Overall, if you look at the classification for districts, which equal 406, 92% are designated as not requiring assistance. We fall into that category. 6% requiring assistance, and two districts insufficient data. They're not MCAS-related districts. If we look at accountability categories for districts, this is where things changed a little this year. There were two accountability categories last year. Now you can see there are clearly 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, if you include the last two as 1. 16% of Massachusetts districts, and these are MCAS districts, were in meeting or exceeding targets. 55% were categorized as substantial progress towards targets, our schools. 22%, or the Tewksbury Public School District, 22% moderate progress. These are the new categories. 1% categorized as limited or no progress, so no progress towards their target. And then you have that 5% and 2% who need intensive or broad support. So what do we know? We cannot compare 2018 and '19 accountability data to historical accountability data we used to know. The percentiles, performance against targets have even changed, and the former achievement levels are no longer in existence. We cannot equate the 2018 and '19 accountability categories with historical accountability and assistance levels, because there's no crosswalk between old levels and the new levels. What we can't do is compare by grade 5 and 8 science results, because they took a new Next Generation MCAS test. And the 10th grade math in the LA test also shifted totally into the newer standards all Next Generation MCAS. So we're still at that beginning stage of understanding this accountability, and things have changed. What we can do, of course, just like last year, we can use this, these results for our own internal planning purposes, which is what we're in the midst of doing, review the resources Desi puts out for us, and continue to ask questions and learn more, because really, this is old data, but it helps us move forward. So if you look at page 2 of my summary, I tried to, you know, again, give a visual for anyone who's looking at this document for the first time, and you can see that crossed out is that historical leveling of districts. That no longer exists. What we do have is that information that I listed in a table. The blueprint is district information, and the red print is school information. So now you can see that larger category where they spell out 0 to 24%, towards target is limited or no progress, 25 to 49, these are the new ones, moderate progress, 50 to 74, substantial progress, and 75 to 100, meeting or exceeding. And if you follow the table down, and that's the band you want to be in. Obviously, it's nicer to be in the 50% of progress or higher. And if we look at Tewksbury Public Schools as a district, we fall 55, we fall in that substantial progress. Three of our schools fell in that category, which are the high school, the Wynn, and the Ryan. And in that 25 to 49... and in that twenty-five to forty-nine percent moderate progress towards targets, our two grade three, four schools fell in that category, so we're making good progress, if you look at, what does progress mean, if you look at the next page, I tried to spell out, um, the accountability, um, ratings are based on two key, this is why I changed colors now, so we had blue for district, red for schools, we want, now have purple, that, this pertains to the, uh, target progress, and there's particular criteria that you earn points to make that target progress, that criteria is weighted differently for different grade bands, so there's student achievement, grades three through eight, that's sixty percent of their points go towards achievement on the tests, the high school, forty percent goes towards achievement, um, student growth is twenty percent for grades three through eight and twenty percent for high school, now the high school only has certain indicators, um, that are clumped together worth twenty percent, and that is our graduation rate, our dropout rate, so we want our graduation rate high, our dropout rate low, and advanced coursework, so all of those courses you saw us list as, um, the AP, the dual enrollment, and some special honors and other courses, like our innovative pathways, things like that, contribute to that twenty percent as extra points towards advanced coursework, and then you can see two key targets or special populations, English language proficiency, those students meeting targets are worth ten percent at all grade levels, and chronic absenteeism is worth ten percent, so the four points you may earn on that, as you remember, that if you were, um, on the board last year, we lost significant points, but we've adjusted our system to make sure we're not losing points on absenteeism and we're coding them appropriately, so that's the purple bar, the orange bar, or the other piece, is accountability percentile ranking, schools get a percentile ranking, the district gets progress towards target, but schools get both, and what does that mean, you are, um, you get a percentile when compared to all schools in your light configuration, the goal is fifty percent or higher, so there's three school configurations, K through eight, Tewksbury Public Schools would fall under K through eight, and nine through twelve, uh, traditional high school configuration, the third category we don't fall under is any other grade mixed with high school, eight through twelve, K through twelve, five through twelve, we don't fall in that category, so when you look at our orange bar, uh, the percentile accountability rating, that is comparing us against our light configurations, so, the next small table you see is a, is a, um, screenshot from the Wynn's accountability rating, you see that the Wynn earned sixty-nine percent progress towards their target and ranked in the accountability percentile at fifty-nine, so if we look at the district and all the schools, and I apologize, our, uh, light orange bar obviously didn't copy well, but you can see the number, so the district, last year in two thousand eighteen, the light purple bar was at forty-one percent towards target, in two thousand nineteen we're at sixty-six, so we're proud of that progress, if we look at the North Street, um, this year, they're at forty-five percent towards target, nineteen percent last year, their accountability rating is above that, fifty, uh, points, which we like, where last year they were forty, and if you look at all the schools, other than the Ryans' progress towards target, 'cause we saw a huge spike last year, but what we see them in this year, we see all schools with improvement on their progress towards target, and improvement from their, uh, or equal their percentile ranking last year to this year, so in all, I, I, I mean, we're, we're, um, not in complete, um, understanding of all the new accountability system, we're, we're learning, but we're pleased to show the growth across the district and to really dig deeper into what the data means. If we, I don't know if you wanna start for questions, the next page is pretty, um, brief, what I wanted to give you is just a snippet of the actual achievement data that we're looking into, and when I say this is just a summary page, I highlighted for you, this, this achievement level for Tewksbury shows every grade level with MCAS testing, and the different content areas of MCAS testing, and what I highlighted for you is that first column, everywhere the district met or exceeded expectations, where the district outperformed the state average on meeting or exceeding, and you can see down the row, uh, or down that column, that at every grade level, other than at Mass. grade seven, we've exceeded the state average, or met, um, the state average, so we're very proud to show you that data, including if you go further down the row, grade ten, uh, science, it's, it's our grade nine biology test, but they listed as grade ten, science and technology, so, um, this is our first swipe at district accountability, achievement data, as I said, we'll be, um, scheduling several workshops with our principals as how they share this data with teachers, how they understand it, parents already receive their student's MCAS report, um, our intention is to answer questions from parents specifically around what next, through the teacher, the principal, and a presentation, we, um, have yet to put a date on, but are planning to also post online as a video, um, and as I said, with, with principals, some of the work they're already doing is, they, the data is better reported now, I know this is, uh, it, it's a lot of, um, update on this, but for example, principals are able to print students' essays from last year's MCAS, and now share them with the student, and if you will, do an autopsy on them to, for students to understand, how can I improve my writing, so things like that are happening in the class already, and we're working with principals to really articulate what they are.
Excellent, any questions?
I, I get a quick point.
Sure.
Um, so when I look at this last, uh, slide, where we're, we're sort of beating the state across the board, which is obviously great news, how do I, how do I compare that or correlate that to the North Street, Interhand being below the targets on the previous page?
Well, um, so, achievement is a very different piece of data than accountability, and, um, if you look at individuals' achievement, right, that's what that last page is comparing, student achievement scores and grade-level achievement scores, where accountability is, they're setting a target for you to continuously improve, and you're making progress towards that, now you're getting points, so what are the points worth, um, if we have, some of our special populations have to, um, if we are only earning one out of the four points, that impacts our accountability progress towards target.
Okay.
If we have a low, I will tell you at the grade three and four, we noticed, um, chronic absenteeism as an issue we need to look at, was it a coding issue, these, this is some of the digging deeper into the data per school, or was it, um, that we have a chronic absenteeism issue at grade three and four, really, you know, and that's not a student, uh, choice, right, that, that's often, they don't drive themselves to school.
Out of that age.
Right, so, so we need to work with, what does that data mean, so, accountability is about points you earn towards certain criteria, where, uh, achievement will be based on the actual student score in comparison to other scores.
All right, great, thank you.
There's also a reciprocal to that, in the date, in the, two years ago, leading up to this, when there was no accountability factor, they were still establishing targets, North Street, two years ago, Trahan, a year ago, did well, their targets were adjusted because in the particular year where they started, those targets were made pre, which is okay, that's what we want, we want high target, that's all good stuff, but that's why they said, some of this is in, and you'd almost have a little bit, if you went into the history at the Ryan and the Wynn, you'd see some of those pieces, there, maybe they had some years where they were much closer to the state average and sometimes a little bit below, their targets are reflected because they're not as high the following year, but they're exceeding those targets, so, some of it is the pattern in which we've, particularly those years with that accountability was not used, we had a couple of years at grades three or four, we did pretty good, but that's gonna reflect in higher targets for us.
One thing I wanna also point out too, is that the grade three, four testing is new to these kiddos and developmentally, sometimes we don't know if we're actually testing them on the actual content of the test, or are we testing them now on the online component in their keyboarding, so a lot of times we need to take it with a grain of salt and just say, as long as we are moving the district forward, as far as three and four maybe just meeting it, but then by the time they get up to the tenth grade, where they just really are knocking it out of the, the park, that's what we want, we want those building blocks, so I just, not to derail the conversation, but I also wanna make sure that we keep into account too, that the three, the grades three and four, we're still teaching them how to take the test.
Sure.
Along with the content on the test, so I also want us to just make sure that we're looking at that trajectory going forward, that grades three and four, we're right in there, we're right in the game, we're not like, looking like we need remediation, but by the time they get up to grade ten, we're, we're really pretty substantial, when you're looking here at the districts meeting and exceeding, when we're talking one point for grade seven math.
Right.
To me, that's a wash, you know, I mean, this is stellar, and all of our faculty and staff and people that work with these students and the students themselves should all be applauded, because this is reflective of great work happening daily, you know, so I just wanted to take a minute and add my two cents.
Thank you for that, I, I appreciate that, we are very proud of our staff and students.
This is day-to-day teaching and day-to-day learning.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Demos, anyone else? All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, new business, haven't already taken the trips, going to ask Mrs. Regan to give us an update on the Northeast Professional Educators Network.
Well, um, this is a, a snapshot from our website, but, and, um, you can see the Northeast Professional Educator Network hosts an annual high-quality professional development for what is, um, labeled as low incident roles, roles that, um, we don't have a lot of, and most districts don't, so we regionalize to host amazing PD, we have over two thousand teachers, um, about two hundred some odd presenters, so, I apologize, it looks like Tewksbury is not on the list when the website, when this piece was printed, but, um, so many member districts, it's an amazing day, it's coming up November 5th, a lot of work is being done to plan for it, and very proud to share this with you, even more proud to share with you, and I'm, I apologize that it wasn't listed on, in the, um, the agenda under PD, is our October 11th PD Day, um, you've seen these lists before, lots of stuff is going on, but why this day was just, you know, so amazing, and what made us so proud is, um, if you remember the district goals of PLCs, High Effective Teacher Working Teams, PLC Facilitator Training, Curriculum Mapping as a Long-Term Goal, what happened on this day, um, started really at the beginning of the school year, we hosted and front-ended some really high-quality PD with heavy hitters, RBT, Research for Better Teaching, uh, UBD, Understanding by Design, and, um, you can see lower on the list Carrie Stack, world-renowned presenter on, uh, special ed, uh, inclusion, what happened was we trained the principals and these teacher leaders to be effective PLC facilitators, but also lead PD with their own departments, this day was teacher-led, teacher-driven, the evaluation on this PD that we continue to get is best ever, I really felt part of a learning, high-effective teacher team, keep it going, we wanna connect our curriculum mapping to the instructional cycle and improving student learning, and the comments just kept going and going, so I wanted you to just know that, you know, the district vision, the district strategy, our long-term goals around really, uh, helping teachers work together to improve student learning, is taking shape, and this was an amazing day, and you can see all the things, um, that, that we're very proud of, and the list doesn't say enough, but we have been hearing from teachers saying we really feel we're making a difference through this type of PD together, so, wanted to share that with you.
Great, thank you, any questions?
I just have a comment, um, I'm glad to hear that it was such a successful PD Day, I think the PLCs, um, are definitely something that all of our students are gonna benefit from, if we can get more and more teachers trained in effective implementation of this, I think that the collaboration piece alone, and being able to have conversations with their colleagues, will just be invaluable, I mean, I think when you have teacher-led, and we're using our resources within the district, how smart is that, right, I mean, working collaboratively is only going to increase that differentiation, and we're going to get, in turn, like, meeting the needs of all of our students in this Tewksbury Public Schools, whether those students need to be challenged, or if they are struggling and need a little bit more help, so, I wanna applaud all the teachers that attended that workshop, because that, I think, is a driving force in Tewksbury Public Schools.
You know, they, uh, the, some of the comments, I, and I, um, won't share them verbatim, but somewhere, it felt great to be on this side of PD, different but great, i- it's a cycle of learning, setting targets, using those curriculum apps, setting targets, using formative data, to know if we hit the target, and when we don't, or students don't, what do, what firm action are we gonna take to correct that, and, and that is really a cycle that needs to be routine, in order to take shape, and these teachers leading it, uh, taking a risk in front of all of their colleagues, because that, that was, in this room, we had a hundred-plus teachers, and five high school teachers led the entire morning, it was impressive.
That's awesome, thank you.
That was just one school, you're welcome.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Regan, and on to our summer reading.
It's hard to believe with Frostm, um, you know, upon us maybe tonight, um, we're giving you the, the final summary on summer reading, it feels so far away, but, um, obviously you can see many of our students kept their brains working all throughout the summer, reading and parents reading with our younger students, um, we're, uh, what you have on the front is the summary per grade level, which I'm very pleased to show, our upper grade's still performing, uh, I mean, um, participating at high levels, and what we do see is sometimes in our junior year and senior year a dip, because students that are participating in the AP or really high-level courses are doing a lot of summer work additionally, but it's still nice and impressive to see how many participated, if you look onto the backside of this, you can now, um, discern between the grade levels at each school, so, um, again, we're proud of our students and our parents for helping to keep our students reading, uh, hopefully eventually we'll have summer math as well, I joke, but, um, we wanted to give you that information.
Now, just a question, dumb question.
Sure.
How do you, how do you get this, this data, I mean, is it, is it typically just the honor system, or is it?
No, um, well, no.
I mean, it's just a test, or?
No, I can tell you that at every grade level, at every school, whether it be the homeroom teacher or the English teacher, depending on the grade level, they collect the student's summer reading, and at some grade levels, if you remember, there are assignments that go along with the reading, it also feeds into the first writing sample, many students do, questions will be asked on not the particular book, not a multiple choice, but a theme, like survival or character building, what, you know, character, um, um, the main character of the book, so it, it doesn't necessarily mean, tell us the fact that happened in chapter two, it's, it's bringing back those reading comprehension skills into the writing, so the homeroom teacher collects the, um, assignments or the summer reading logs, and then there's an activity, whether it be, you know, discussing the book or that writing piece, that baseline writing, that students participate in, and then the teachers, uh, collect their individual data, they feed that to the principal who does the school data, they feed that to us to do the district data, so it takes a little time, um, but it's, I, I guess you could say it's on the honor system to a certain degree, because it will be difficult to participate in the activity if you didn't do any of it.
Is that what you would see representative in, say, like, the third grade, seventy-seven percent, so the teacher kid comes in, hey, I did my summer reading, and then he puts a bagel up on the questions, who were the main characters?
Yes, something to that effect, or, um, less who are the main characters, but talk about the character's development throughout the story, so could, it's obviously gonna be, uh, smaller writing sample at the younger grade levels, um, but we expect parents, you know, to read to their children when they're younger, it's harder to get our kindergarten and first-grade kiddos on board, because they just don't know the district and these, you know, routines that we have as familiar, they're not as familiar with them as kiddos that have moved on in the grades, um, I mean, it, and sometimes what we accept is, we don't ask for it day one, we give a little bit of time for parents and kiddos to get that stuff all filled out and get in, and, um, it gives students that maybe didn't get an opportunity to really do it over the summer, to get their brains engaged again before the school year and, and any kind of assessments really start.
Brenda, can I just ask, how are we communicating with the younger children, how do the kindergarten, incoming kindergarten students, um, how do their parents, how, are we making them aware?
How would they know, so at kindergarten registration, and we post everything online, so sometimes it's a hit or miss, it's if, if parents, um, got to us early, got that packet, or went online and found that, but then at the first through up grade level, reading teachers, um, or the English teacher prepares students for the summer reading class.
Yeah, I just wasn't clear on the kindergarten, when I was looking at the data throughout the week, when I, I was just looking at, you know, it, it's fifty percent isn't something to, but I was just wondering how we can, the demands in kindergarten just aren't what they used to be, right, so if we can get these kiddos, uh, books in hand and get that text, just all those connections being made prior to their kindergarten experience, it will, it'll go a long way, and I'm just wondering how we could kinda push that information to the parents earlier, but if it's at the register-
But if it's at the registration, I mean, I think that's as early as we can activate.
And we don't, we don't get all of our, we don't get one hundred percent of our families registering at registration. A lot of them happen, believe it or not, very late in the summer. So it is harder to get.
It's coming off a lot of times to a community services preschool database.
There you go.
Which is not going to capture.
It's not going to get a lot. Yeah, okay. I was just curious because when I was looking at those numbers and I was thinking, you know, if we could just expose them to the text a little bit sooner.
Oh, absolutely.
Reading is fundamental.
Right.
I'm curious, I know there's probably not an answer, but the 11th grade this year was sixty-three percent, but the previous year, they looked like they were eighty-nine percent in 10th grade. So it's just odd. You know, it seems odd to me, even looking at, back at last year's percentages, that this one particular class just kind of stood out, for whatever reason.
I don't know what that reason is, and you know, we're, I know this might sound odd, but we're very proud when we have sixty-three percent of high schools participating in summer reading event. We really fought hard to get those numbers up, and it's a little bit of a blip for us in the last couple of years, but we used to have numbers in the twenty, and I know Mr. Francis used to say this, and the forty percent was high, that we're still very happy our students are participating, if you will, throughout the summer as a high schooler.
All right, anyone else? All right, and I know Mr. Libby already gave his very thorough update. Thank you. So we're going to move on to school committee matters of interest, and I'm going to start with you this evening, Mr. Wilson.
I have nothing, nothing to add this evening.
Okay, great. Mr. Staben?
The only thing I can see is we've got Apple Fest coming on Saturday, nine to three, right here at the high school. I know there's crafts and local vendors selling their wares, but there's also a good amount of teens and high schools, clubs and such that you can support coming out and buying their wares. So I'd say stock up. You've got Christmas coming here, and you've got other holidays, and you know, you've got a big tea that you've got to have embroidered or crocheted or.
There you go.
Get a cup or a mug holder or something else. Come on by.
Great. Great, thank you. Mr. Cadlos?
I'll sit, Mr. Chuda. Thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you for supplying that plethora of data that you shared with us tonight regarding the class sizes throughout the district. It really makes a big difference when looking and understanding what it looks like in the upper levels. I feel like I have a pretty good understanding, pre-K to six, what it looks like as far as numbers, but it really did kind of bring it all together for me to see like what the numbers look like up here in the high school. So that moving forward, when I, you know, coming to make some decisions, you know, regarding the budget and things, I can truly appreciate, you know, what it looks like up there and where the needs would be. But I just didn't want you to think that the effort and the time went unnoticed, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. And I have just two things. Big thank you to the beautification committee and the many volunteers that worked on October 5th, the cleanup day. They had, once again, almost a couple hundred volunteers. They picked up a couple hundred bags of trash and computer screens and tires, and it's a really good thing that they do twice a year. So hopefully that continues to grow. And then finally, the North Street and Trahan reuse meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 28th. Special thanks to the superintendent for getting our committee over there. We're going to actually walk the Trahan property, go through the school, and hopefully I will have an update after the next meeting. That's all I have this evening. Future school committee meetings scheduled for November 14th, 2019, and December 4th, 2019. And at this time, does anyone have any future agenda items? As always, anyone can email anyone on the school committee or the superintendent if they would like to have anything placed on the agenda. With that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening and have a good night.